Good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Fall River School Committee for Monday, July 19th, 2021 to order. Madam Secretary, would you please call a roll?
Mr. Agia?
Here.
Mr. Costa?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here.
Mr. Hetzel?
Here.
Mr. Corey?
Here.
Ms. Larrabee?
Here.
Mayor Coogan.
And just for the record, the Chair will be here. He has another obligation of the meeting this evening, but he will be joining us at some point, just so the record will reflect that the Chair will be here at some point tonight. With that said, will everyone in attendance, please join me for a salute to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next agenda item is the disclosure for the open meeting law. Pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Next agenda item is the citizens' input section of tonight's meeting. We have two individuals who've signed up. One is Mr. Colin Dias from 560 Ray Street. Agenda item is, item, discussion item, excuse me, is the ACLU. Mr. Dias, welcome.
Mr. Costa, I just want to say for the record, I hope that the second letter that was submitted by a colleague of mine is read in its entirety. With that being said, thank you, members of the school committee. I just want to say, I wish our mayor were here today. I'm disappointed, as a member of this community, that Mayor Coogan prioritized a political meeting, the ARPA meeting, over the needs of the school department. This shows not only a complete disrespect to the school department, the faculty, and the students, but Mayor Coogan put their needs second to his reelection campaign, and that, in my opinion, is not okay. Also, why didn't Mayor Coogan and Mark Costa add the ACLU's letter to the school committee agenda? The ACLU delivered a letter to the vice chairman, outlined constitutional violations he committed. There is a big problem in this school committee when it comes to violations of people's civil liberties. Mark Costa has constantly censored my citizens' input, not allowing them to be read out loud, in violation of the law. And Mayor Coogan, at every single school committee meeting, will take my citizens' input speeches and will go through them and censor out the parts him and the attorney do not agree with. At the last meeting, the vice chairman said he was going to stop me from speaking if I said something that he didn't agree with, and it's just not me, it's many city residents. The ACLU clearly outlined, the school committee policies, when it comes to citizens' input, is just unconstitutional. They asked for cooperation. Let's cooperate with the ACLU. I know we have many black clouds and legal issues in this school department, but I believe we should not add to them. Stop censoring free speech and please follow the law. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dias. The next individual who has submitted a citizens' input for the committee this evening is Mr. Hal Levin, who resides at 35 Pilgrim Road in Lakeville, Massachusetts. His topic this evening is ACLU. I would need a motion to waive the rules. Is there a motion? Made by Mr. Hart. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Agia. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yep.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Thank you. Motion passes. Madam Secretary, would you please?
Good afternoon, members of the school committee. I am disappointed Mark Costa and the infamous Committee of Four violated the constitutional rights of my friend Colin Dias in his citizens' input. The ACLU is a prestigious organization. The city of Fall River is at risk of legal jeopardy by violating citizens' rights to freedom of speech. It is not only Colin Dias that is censored, it is multiple members of the community. Why does Mark Costa violate the constitutional rights of residents? Is it because he doesn't want the public to investigate his influence into his family members getting a job in the district, or the fact he protected Superintendent Malone along with his Committee of Four? It is an absolute shame what is going on. Mark Costa, if you continue to violate the law, please resign. The Committee of Four's trying over the district, school district, must stop. Thank you very much. Hal Levin.
Thank you, Madam Secretary, and thank you, Mr. Levin. Attorney Assad?
Yes, I'd just like to address the issue of the ACLU. We did receive a letter from the ACLU with respect to a case by the City of Natick. That particular case was a Superior Court case, did not go to the appellate court because it was resolved prior to going to the appellate court, so therefore did not get the wide recognition that other cases would receive that a law. I contacted, as a result of getting the letter, I did contact the City of Natick's attorney and talked to him concerning the case. I have read the case, I've looked at the research. I also contacted the MSAC. MSAC is the Mass Association of School Committees that we work with in terms of also preparing and advising us as to certain policies, including the public input policy, and as a result incorporated much of the language, if not all of the language, from the MSAC. The MSAC has since looked at the language and has made certain amendments. Those amendments I've reviewed, I've talked to the individuals at the MSAC, and I will be making a recommendation at the August meeting to the school committee with respect to what I've researched and what the law dictates. Now, the law doesn't state, and the case doesn't state, now just very quickly, that the law or the procedure that we have is unconstitutional. What they do is they want certain safeguards and protections to ensure that the information is correct, the information is constitutional, and is not, is protected speech, so that individuals can speak at a public forum, such as the school committee. Again, I've researched it, I've talked to the parties that are involved, and we're making a recommendation to the committee at the August meeting.
Thank you, Attorney Assad. The next agenda item is recognition awards this evening. We have none listed for the committee's attention tonight. Item number four is the superintendent's report. Madam Superintendent, would you, for the committee, please?
Thank you. Tonight, we have a couple of updates for the committee. First of all, I'd like to start with the Durfee progress. The Field House is close to, hopefully, receiving its temporary certificate of occupancy, as is the main building. We actually are due to receive the temporary certificate of occupancy for the main building on Friday. We're hoping that all stays on schedule, and that happens. As, if you've driven by, you can see that landscaping and hardscape is progressing in the front and the back of the building. Furniture is arriving daily. Flooring and finishing touches are being applied to the academic core building. The ceramic tile work throughout the building is progressing nicely. The remainder of the exterior part of the Field House is being abated in preparation of the metal stud framing and the hardy board installation, and the boiler plant of the main building is operational. On any given day, from Monday through Friday, we have about 268 construction workers there, and on the weekends, Saturday and Sundays, we have about 125 to 150 people working. It's a pretty busy place. But, that's not the only building that's being worked on. We have some capital improvements also happening. Throughout the district, Watson renovation is well underway. The new electrical service is being installed as we speak. The restrooms in the basement are being renovated, they've been demoed, and they're scheduled to be completed, hopefully soon, for the opening. The roof plumbing is happening right now. Phase two of the bids actually exceeded the budget amount. We're examining the scope of the work and are going to be making the necessary adjustments, and the roof replacement is underway. Henry Lord bid opening for the road, the bidding, looking, was today, and we're looking for recommendations and will be awarding the contract to the lowest bidder. Science lab renovations are happening. We're repurposing the science labs from Durfee High School and setting them up at Henry Lord. The finishing touches on the basketball court are also happening. Talbot is also receiving some of the science labs from Durfee High School, and that work is happening as we speak. The bidding documents are out, and the bid opening is scheduled for August 1st. This project is about draining, parking lot improvement, sidewalk reconstruction, and curbing, and the greenhouse from Durfee High School is being repurposed and also being brought to Talbot, and that's going to be happening within the next four weeks. And also, in the old Durfee, the special needs offices were located there. They're being relocated to Pace Center. That area has been demolished and is being, in the process of being renovated, and people will be moving in there, hopefully, around opening. So, that's for capital improvements and Durfee. We also have hiring update. This is a fluid situation because, as you know, hiring is happening every single day. Currently, as of Friday, we had 122 positions posted. That doesn't mean that we have 122 positions open. That means there are, there are people that are in the process of being hired, and of those 122, 51 are teachers, 13 are administrators, 10 are ESNONS, and 47 are PERS, and they encompass from elementary. We have 16 teachers in elementary, 20 at the middle, and 14 at the high school. The principals and HR have done a phenomenal job in filling positions. Every day, we are signing letters of recommendation, so that's well underway. And, a budget update. Again, and I think I pretty much updated you in the Friday memo, FY22 budget has been approved. Hiring is in full swing. Positions have all been posted. Many are in the process. ESR funds, we're going to be submitting our application for ESR II funds. That's due on July 31st. We'll be coming to this committee to discuss how we will expend that money. ESR III application is going to be due on October 4th. We will do the same, and the, I shared with you the deadlines for spending those funds. ESR I, 9/30/22, will be when we have to spend those funds by. ESR II will be 9/30/23, and ESR III will be 9/30/24. And I believe that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Mr. Hart?
I just have a really quick question. I was just out and about, Madam Superintendent, in that neighborhood over the weekend, and I got a few questions about the southwest corner, Elsbury and Langley, as to why that sidewalk's closed. It's right at the corner where it says sidewalk closed.
Is that near Langley Street?
Yeah, it's Langley and.
So, the sidewalks closed because they were resurfacing it.
But it's up there, it's up there every, it's been up there every day.
Because they couldn't walk on that side of the road because of the, the construction going on in front of the new Durfee. So, they were moved, they were asked to go across the street and walk on that side. Most of the work in front of Durfee is completed, and they just have a stretch of about 50 to 75 feet of sidewalk left to do between the last entrance of the new Durfee and Langley Street.
Okay.
Once that's finished, we'll be, we'll be done.
Nope, that's all I needed to know. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Ms. Larrabee?
Thank you, Mr. Costa. Just a question. Madam Superintendent, how's summer school going?
Summer school is going well. We have programs in every single one of our schools. 24th Century, in addition to our, every school is asked to put a summer learning opportunity for kids, so every school has a site that's, it's well attended. I can certainly get that information for you for the Friday memo as to attendance, et cetera, by school, but it's going well.
And it's fully staffed? Everything is at expectation, everything was filled?
I think that the regular programs are fully staffed. I think that we have some paraprofessional positions that Mr. Loesch and his team have still been hiring.
Nothing of major concern, though, correct?
So far, so good.
Great. How are the kids at RPA? I know all the Durfee students are at RPA. That's going smoothly?
Ms. Larrabee, I hate to interrupt you, but we don't have an update from the superintendent on the ceiling's agenda regarding summer school, so I'm going to ask Madam Superintendent, if you can get that information, the members of the committee, maybe in the Friday memo.
Yes.
I hate to do that, but I just want to make sure that we're staying within the confines of the agenda. Anyone else? Ms. Agia?
Just briefly, I think you had mentioned about the budget that we had approved, sort of in a haste, I guess, the whole thing, so are we going to be getting something that, and I apologize if I missed it, but to clarify what positions are actually filled, not filled, so we can get a handle on it?
Yeah, as I said, it's so fluid right now because there's so much hiring happening, but we can get one as close to possible as people are being recommended for hire. We don't take those down from the posting until HR has processed them completely. We'll try to get a report as accurate as possible for you.
Yeah, my concern was just that I know at the time when we voted on it, it was also giving the superintendent at that time the authority to either hire or not hire any of those positions, because we never got a second bite at the apple, for lack of a better way to say it, on the budget. So, I, for one member, would like you to sort of weigh in. If we thought there was positions that should have been X instead of Y, or whatever, I think in a future meeting, we could have that discussion, not necessarily just pushing them all through. I want to rely on your expertise on that. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Agia, and just so, Ms. Agia, we'll always have a bite at that apple, so if the superintendent or administration brings back a report to this committee, the committee can certainly transfer funds from any of those lines to either add additional positions that we may need, or to, obviously, if the money's not needed in professional salaries, we can transfer it to a line on them that the committee feels there may be need, so.
Can I just clarify what I, what I was speaking of? So, when we had gone through all of the departments, schools, they all recommended certain things, and then typically, what would happen is we'd have another meeting where the superintendent at the time would have said, I think we were talking about counselors shifting and the vice, you know, all that stuff. When we approved the budget, sort of all at once, including the wish list, we never got that second information from the superintendent.
As to which ones were filled?
No, which one was going to be switched. So, he was going to come back to us with, okay, we're going to add a guidance counselor here. We had, I think, three tech, instructional tech folks that they said, oh yeah, we're going to hire those. Well, they never made it back to our desk before we approved it, so those are the things I'm trying to get to, but I trust that we're going to be on the same page with it. Just please, do whatever you need to do to let us know. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Agia. And, Madam Superintendent, if you and Ms. Almeida can take a look at that and have that information for the committee, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you. Anyone else? Any comments? No? Moving on, the next agenda item is student comment delegation, delegate report. I don't see our student delegates, being that it's the summertime. I hope they're enjoying themselves. Look forward to seeing student delegates back with us in September. The next agenda item is the approval of minutes.
Motion to approve 6.1, 6.2, 6.3, and 6.4.
So, Mr. Hart makes a. Mr. Hart makes a motion to approve all the minutes as listed. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Agia. For the record, 6.1 is the approval of the minutes for the special meeting of the school committee on March the 1st, 2021. 6.2 is the approval of the minutes for the special education, alternative education, early college meeting on April 8th, 2021. 6.3 is the approval of the minutes for the special meeting of the school committee on 6/21/21, and 6.4 is the approval of the minutes for the special meeting of the school committee, 6/24/21. Motion's been made, and there's a second. Any discussion on a motion? Hearing none. Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yep.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
The next agenda item is the approval of travel requests. We have travel requests here submitted this evening by Mr. Matt Damaris, the principal of Durfee High School. Destination is the Thunderbolt Invitational to Cranston East Stadium for Durfee High School's marching band. Three adult chaperones, 30 students.
Motion to approve.
Second, just that one, Mr. Hart, or?
I'm sorry, no, we'll bundle them too, as well as the next one, but, I mean, you know.
The second one is the Durfee High School principal, Matt Damaris, requesting permission to travel US bands, New England State Championship in New Britain, Connecticut. Three adult chaperones, 30 students. That's to occur on October 30th, 2021, and that also is for the Durfee High School marching band. Mr. Hart made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Agia. Any discussion on a motion to travel? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Number eight, acceptance of donations.
Motion to approve acceptance of donations.
There's a motion to accept made by Mr. Hart. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hetzler. Madam Superintendent, for the record, would you please inform the committee as to the donors and the amounts and where they're going, please?
Certainly. Most of these are for Project Lead the Way, and on behalf of Principal Rouette at Cust Middle School, $9,575. Project Lead the Way, on behalf of Principal Damaris, $9,448. On behalf of Dr. Bronhard, Project Lead the Way, $7,500. On behalf of Principal Patterson, Project Lead the Way, $7,500. On behalf of Principal Leacy, Fonsica, $6,355 for Project Lead the Way. On behalf of Principal Lenz, $5,734 for Project Lead the Way. On behalf of Principal Cobb, $5,734, Project Lead the Way. On behalf of Principal Adet, $5,734 for Project Lead the Way. On behalf of Principal Witty, $2,734, Project Lead the Way. On behalf of Principal Sipson, $1,645, Project Lead the Way. On behalf of Principal Bradley, $1,626, Project Lead the Way. And on behalf of Principal Reposo, $1,462, Project Lead the Way. And on behalf of Principal Damaris, $988.48 from Stop &amp; Shop, A+ Rewards.
Before we take that vote, Madam Superintendent, if you can, I missed the one on behalf of the Fonska Elementary School, Ms. Leacy, for $4,000 from Project Lead the Way. Is that bundled with?
Yes.
So, that's, I thought, I thought you said the total was $6,355.
$6,355 is Fonsica, Principal Leacy.
Okay, can you just point to where that is on our agenda, because I may have missed it?
Oh, it's, Ms. Cabral bundled down on this one, but it's not bundled on the agenda, that's why. So, let me.
I just want to make sure we don't miss any, or that we're taking up the proper amount. I see that on the second page, there's one for $4,000, and then there's another one for $2,355. So, those combined, for the total?
Yes, those are combined.
Very well. Any further questions regarding donations? Hearing none. Roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Next agenda item is item number nine, approval of contracts. Is there a motion to approve the contracts?
Motion to approve contracts?
Second.
There's a motion made by Mr. Hart, this seconded by Ms. Larrabee. Any discussion on the contracts?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yeah, just got a question on the Aspen contract, and I just wanted to, is that an update from the special meeting we had on information systems last month? Is that the renewal for Aspen?
That's our, we still have another year with them, so that's next year's, that's the money that we.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I wanted to get a clarification. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you, Mr. Corey. Any other discussion on the contracts? Motion's been made and seconded. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Item number 10 is the approval of grants. Is there a motion to approve the grants as listed this evening in the agenda?
So moved.
Seconded by Mr. Hetzler, seconded by Mr. Hart, Mr. Corey, which one? Mr. Hart?
Yeah, Mr. Corey got me.
Mr. Hart, is there any discussion on the grants? Just for the record, grant is coordinated family community engagement, $490,580. 21st Century Community Learning Center support additional learning time at Doran for $180,000. Development and expansion of high school quality summer learning at Morton, $40,000. Increase access to the ASOT, Doran, and Green, $41,600, and Student Opportunity Act evidence-based programs for $65,000. Madam Secretary, a motion's been made by Mr. Hetzler, seconded by Mr. Hart. Roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yep.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Item number 11, in the committee of the whole, is a vote to approve the selection of the appointments of Linda Aruda, Anne Marie Fertado, Stephanie McHenry as nurses for the Fall River Public Schools, as presented by Mr. Coogan, human resource directors.
Motion to approve.
Made by Mr. Hart. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Corey. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Item 11.2, in the committee of the whole, is a presentation and discussion on the Almond Commission Report, as presented by Dr. Sharice Taylor, Assistant Superintendent of Student Services and Strategic Integration. I'd like to welcome to the podium Dr. Taylor. Welcome.
Good evening, Vice Chair Costa and members of the school committee. So, I'm here before you today to give you a summary of the commission that was set up in May to review the district's policies and procedures that were related to the Almond case that happened in October 2020. So, we comprised the commission, full of members of public, Fall River Public Schools, Department of Children and Family Regional Office, Fall River Police Department, and the Fall River Juvenile Court, met over four meetings and engaged in the inquiry process, where they were asked to examine and reflect on the district's policies and procedures. The team engaged in an investigation of six policies, ranging from our student transfer policy, to our crisis plans, to our student, student engagement, and remote attendance policies as well. They were asked to review based on three questions: what works well, what could be improved, and what adaptations might need to be made in order to support new implementation. Overall, the commission found that the policies that we do have in writing, they're sufficient, and what we need to do is to tighten up on implementation. We also found that in some cases, there are some practices and procedures that we engage in as common practice in the district, but they're not written down. So, as we think going forward, the committee has really engaged in a lot of rich discussion that has led to a deeper, a desire to engage more deeply in supporting students in Fall River, and to really think about having coordinated efforts and better communication among all of the city agencies that serve the city's youth. With that, I'll take any questions.
Are there any questions of Dr. Taylor regarding the, Mr. Corey?
Don't want to sound out of touch with this question, Dr. Taylor, but I thought the school system took a real lot of heat on this particular case, and we've had so many cases like this through the years, but the Department of Children and Families is clearly inundated with their caseloads, state-level wide, and I know that Governor Baker has, over the years, really been an advocate to increase mental health services. And, I don't know, somewhere along the line, it's, it's like a ball being dropped, but I think this was mostly on, on New York's department, as opposed to our state's department. In any case, the caseloads are just overflowing, and it's very tough to keep up, and it takes a real lot of money to keep up with such a deep caseload. That being said, I know the school department tries its very, very best each year to handle, you know, these cases as they arise, and as a former counselor in the schools, I remember working extremely closely with the Department of Children and Families on so many cases, and trying to reach some type of resolution or some type of positive, you know, outcome for the case itself. So, I just thought that we took a lot of heat and a lot of negative press publicity that maybe should not have been aimed at, as, that's, that's really what I wanted to say, is I was very concerned with, with all the front-page news and the PR on this case, and I didn't think that we had a whole lot to do with it. I think we tried our very best, given the circumstances, in this particular case, and, and that's that. I mean, I'm very sorry for the outcome for what happened, and hope that we can, you know, look at this and maybe grow from this and make advancements in the future. With that, I yield, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Corey. Mr. Agia?
So, thank you for the presentation. Two quick questions. When I read this, it looked like there was some policy recommendations. there was some policy recommendations as well as some administrative tweaking, tightening up. I think that's what the word used. Is that accurate, just to summarize them?
Yes, that's correct. So one of the things we need to do is we need to actually put our student transfer policy in writing. And we do need to come up with a policy and procedure around revising our attendance policy and also solidifying how we operate in student support teams so that we have consistency across the district.
Yeah, so I think there should be more talk and discussion in the policy subcommittee related to this. So I'd like to make a motion that we refer this report to the policy subcommittee for their review and then come back to the full committee with their recommendations.
Seconded.
Mr. Agia makes a motion to refer the commission's report to the policy subcommittee for review and recommendation to the full committee regarding any changes or additional policy that may be needed. It was made by Mr. Agia, seconded by Mr. Corey. Any discussion on that motion to refer? Madam Secretary, roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larvee?
Yes.
Mary Coogan.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. The report's been referred, but are there any additional questions or comments that individuals would like to make to Dr. Taylor? I just want to thank you, Dr. Taylor, for spearheading the commission and leading it. You know, I also want to extend my thanks to the members of the commission for their time and efforts, input. You know, I know it was difficult work, but needed work to, you know, do some reflection on a very tragic situation here in a district. And so I appreciate that work. I look forward to reviewing any suggestions that the commission may have with respect for new policy regarding student transfer or any other policy that the commission felt was needed. So, but thank you very much for that work. I greatly appreciate it.
Mr. Vice Chair?
Yes, Mr. Agia?
I apologize. I thought I had asked all the questions. The one thing that was in this, the recommendations, was the comment around when a staff member, you know, has information and they put it in the computer and then they leave the district and we don't. I just wanted to make sure that that's not going to wait for the, like, if the subcommittee doesn't meet until October, I would assume that that's going to be an implementation immediately to rectify that. Am I accurate on how that looked or?
So that is in relation to when a staff member makes a journal entry and lists it as private. So in our current system, we just need to work as a team to figure out how do we have a backup authorizer, which is the committee's recommendation. But I don't think that we need to, if the committee agrees, then we won't need to wait until the policy subcommittee to make that adjustment.
Yeah, it just seems like it's, maybe they're putting it private when it shouldn't be because maybe everybody needs to see it, but, on certain things, you know, there's certain intricacies of that. But I just want to make sure it wasn't going to go forever. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you, Ms. Agia. Thank you, Dr. Taylor. Next agenda item is Agenda Item 11.3, Discussion and Vote to Approve the Fourth Quarter Budget Transfers, as presented by Mr. Kevin Almeida, Chief Financial Officer.
Motion to approve, 11.3.
Motion is made by Mr. Hart. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hetzler. Any discussions or questions for Mr. Almeida this evening? Mr. Agia?
Yeah, just, when, I see there's a lot of transfers, and I think you acknowledged that in the letter. Is this the two-pager that you gave us for each of the transfers or 50,000?
Yes, it is.
So just, like, as far as format goes, I know I brought this up at other meetings in the past, that when we know there's going to be a transfer, you know, you had indicated we knew there was going to be money in a certain line. I, for one, would want that transfer sooner than later. This seems like now we're doing it in July. We, you know, basically, we have no choice. Thankfully, we have extra money or, you know, savings. But I've been on this committee when there's times where we're pinching every dollar that we can. And this, to me, seems like a lot of transfers sort of after the fact. Am I off on that or is that? What, do you have an opinion?
No, there's, there are quite a few transfers. My concern or my big concern is transferring too much out of a line item because there are unexpected things that happen, you know, towards the end of the year. So we typically wait until now to make the transfers. But I do, you know, as the year goes on, as we know that there are going to be things that are over, we do make transfers over the course of the year, you know, to the best of my knowledge, so.
Yeah, so when a situation's happened and June 30th is coming, and we know we're going to have to pay a bill, is that what you call an encumbrance?
Yes.
So if we know we have a bill owed, and we might not be able to dot our i's and cross our t's on that, we call that an encumbrance?
Yes.
Is there any encumbrances in the budget that you're presenting outside of the transfers?
No. So the, what we currently have is just the encumbrances that are open here on the report.
Sorry, I couldn't hear that.
Just the encumbrances that are reported here on the report.
On the other report?
On this report here.
So we have some encumbrances in the school district?
Yes, we have 5.8 million, of which 1.8 million is the prepaid tuition. And then we have about 4 million in other open encumbrances.
Just a variety of different?
Various. I have hundreds, actually, that are here.
Yeah, but we do have what we would call encumbrances for stuff that we owe in the current year.
Yes.
That we just are encumbering because we know we're going to need to spend that money in the future.
We have encumbrances for bills that we have yet to receive from vendors prior to July 15th.
Or if they were still working through it, negotiating. So that brings me to the point of the transportation one, the 3.1 million. Are we still working with the bus vendors to figure out any of the, what's owed to them for current year?
So, Mr. Agia, we have open lines of communication. Specifically, right now, we're working with Tremblies, exchanging emails and also working with transportation, our transportation department, to be sure that everything that was earned was paid, everything that was related to COVID was covered, and then documenting what days services were not provided. And with Tremblies, and the reason why the dialogue is happening with Tremblies, is they're not, they're not as exact as the other companies. So Wednesdays, as we were closed on Wednesdays, there was transportation going on to some of our other district programs. So that's different than all the rest of the programs. So it was more, it was more of a deeper dive with Tremblies to figure that out than it was with the other bus companies. So that's happening as we speak now.
So you're saying that the other vendors, other than Tremblies, have been paid for the first 10 days of school and Wednesday?
No. What I'm saying with Tremblies is that there are days that Tremblies is being paid, that other district, that other providers are not being paid for. Wednesdays is the easiest example. For instance, all of the other providers did not work on Wednesdays.
And what are they going to get for that? So what money are you, based on what I just asked, Mr. Almeida, that if we know that we have a bill that's owed to a vendor, how much money is encumbered in the transportation line to pay those vendors, either the whole thing or a potential partial part of any of those Wednesdays?
Any of the work that has been completed, most of that has been paid for. There's very few outliers. And I'm going to, I'm going to keep using Tremblies because Tremblies had work on Wednesdays. So the work that Tremblies provided on Wednesdays for us, to the most part, have been paid. We're looking for items that weren't paid, that services were provided for on Wednesdays. What hasn't been touched is the 10 days prior to school starting and the Wednesdays that no services were provided. The dialogue has not gotten that far with them.
Yeah. So what is your take on that, on those, that issue?
Again, the conversation back and forth is that I don't think any of the companies feel it's a paid-in-full situation, but that they feel they do a certain amount of money.
So did anyone, at the start of the year, we just received an email earlier today from Tremblies Bus, the whole school committee did, was, did anyone in the school department tell the vendors to bill for the first 10 days and for the Wednesdays?
The conversation that I had with all the bus companies before anything was said, before anything was decided was, is that we are going to do everything we can to keep this year as a whole. That was the comment that I made to Whaling and to Amaral, because we met them at the same time. Tremblies was not available. And we met Tremblies, I met with Tremblies along with Donna Cabral after the fact and had the same exact conversation. So there were no promises made, but they were asked to bill for those days so that we would have a record.
So they have billed?
We had asked them to bill as that was happening. So we have bills that have not been processed for those particular times. And then we've asked for a separate bill of those that have been serviced.
Yes. So that's part of my concern here is we, at some point, and I think this is what you just said, that we asked them to bill and we didn't guarantee them, we didn't promise them, I think was your own words. But obviously, they are entitled to some variation of that 100% figure, similar issue that we had last year.
There was a difference between this year and last year.
What I'm saying, as far as, you know, conversations needed to happen whether we should pay them percentages or not, we had that debate here. So my concern is that we currently, in the current school budget, we signed the contract with Tremblies. We are the ones that canceled the first 10 days of school. We decided that because of COVID, we were not going to have school on Wednesdays. So it's not just Tremblies, it's any of the vendors I'm speaking of. So just the Wednesdays would have amounted to almost 20% of the whole bid. If it's five days, one day a week, it's almost 20% of a bid that is outstanding to them. And in my opinion, I would consider that to be an encumbrance, based on the conversation I just had with Mr. Almeida. And if we take this entire 3.1 million and transfer it, or, I guess, transfer it just on paper, but how do we go about paying them if you've successfully talked with them about clarifying the days and the times and the 10 days, the Wednesdays? Like, how do we, how do we, as a school committee who signed the contract with these vendors, pay them if we move all the money out?
I don't have an answer for that. I don't know how close, I know how close I am, and I'm nowhere near that point right now with any of the companies. As I said, what I'm trying to do is get everyone paid for what they worked for. And I use that term, you know, as I've been saying right along, that they provided the service those days. I'm not going to stand here and say that they're not doing anything because from day one last year, I said that they'd do something. They did make a contract with us in good faith, and we made one with them, not only what was around the corner. We also said, we also asked them to purchase vehicles based on the amount of a five-year contract and what we felt they were going to have to provide us for updated equipment, cameras, and all the items we asked for in the contract. So I think that there is a certain dollar amount. I, I'm not that negotiator to figure that out, but I can tell you that, that is the conversation that was had in last year, under a different circumstance. That was an emergency order. That was not anything that this district did on its own. This year, the state did suggest that we take the first 10 days off, and then the Wednesdays was something we did internally. Now, we did kick back the Wednesdays, so it's not a full school year of Wednesdays that were missed. But there were quite a few.
Yeah, I don't think, personally, I don't think what I've been advocating for, for the vendors, and what you said is much different. The only thing that I have a problem with right now is that we're, our backs are against the wall as a school committee on taking the $3 million. And we, as a district, haven't figured out what we need to encumber in that amount of money that potentially is owed, just for, just because it's the right thing to do, never mind that they, we have a contract with them. You know, we paid, how much have we paid them, the vendors, for cleaning?
It amounted to almost $600,000.
All the vendors?
Yes.
Is there any money still outstanding for cleaning that should be encumbered?
If there is, we haven't received any bills. We've paid everything to date.
How about any conversations with vendors related to that?
With Tremblies, we had bills that we literally just processed within the past week that should clear up the ones that were still open.
And that money's encumbered?
That money's already paid. It's included here in the totals as paid.
So, well, the last week, they got info in. We received this document last week?
We received, we received a letter from Tremblies last week that said that we still had X number of bills that were still outstanding related to COVID cleaning. The day we received that, we verified that the bills that were on there were paid and processed in with the final batches for June 30th. They haven't received a check yet for it, but the bills have been processed.
Yep. So when we, when we look at the contract or whatever, was there a vote of the committee required to pay them for cleaning? Or can anybody, tell me that?
I'm going to say that the COVID piece was a situation that we knew how, what we were asking. So the cleaning part of the COVID, the morning, prior to any pickups, was done as part of their contract. The evening after the pickups is done part of their contract. What wasn't done as part of their contract, and there was nothing, no language in the contract that would back that up, was when we were doing tiered programs or in between the routes. So during the day, those buses got cleaned, sometimes four times a day, maybe five, depending on how many pickups, pre-K buses doing midday runs. That was extra cleaning on those buses. So someone had to either go to that site or, or that bus was going back to, to the terminal to get cleaned. So that was a decision that I made, moving forward to make sure those buses were ready and following all of the protocols that we had from the guidelines of CDC.
I don't disagree with that. My concern is that that same premise wasn't followed for the Wednesdays and for the 10 days. And that's what the real frustrating part is for me is because that's real money that is owed to these vendors. And I just don't seem to understand why we, the school department, haven't dealt with this. We dealt with the issue before us of COVID, the cleaning, you use your judgment, it's the right thing to do, it's good government, and whatever you want to call it, we did it. But we haven't done that with the 10 days. Like, I think you very clearly articulated that the first 10 days were our decision. They had to provide the buses, get them ready. There's a, there's a number that should be attached to that for making them, treating them fairly, for all of the days that they didn't have Wednesdays. That was our decision. Why haven't we not dealt with that? And I'm frustrated because we're going to take all of the money that we have here. We're going to transfer it to the city. The city has already made their point very well that they don't want to pay a vendor, and they're going to just take the money and put it into other accounts. But we're the ones that signed the contract with these vendors. So we're just going to say, just, you're out of luck? And that's the recommendation from the school administration? That we're out of luck? Sorry, we've been negotiating with you, we'll talk to you, but we're out of luck? How is that right from any of the administrators here? That that's the feeling that we have is that, no, we'll just kick it over and we're not going to pay. How is that right? Somebody, please tell me, in the school administration, how that's okay?
I have to say that there's one issue that has not been brought up by the bus companies. And again, not that I've asked them very specifically, but they also, two companies, maybe three, have received funds, federal funds, whether it was PPP or others. One, 1.2 million, the other a little over 600,000. Fall River is entitled to some of that coming off their bill. And there has been no conversation from them as to how that's coming off the bill, if it's coming off at all. So almost $2 million in those companies. Now, mind you, they have other accounts besides Fall River Public Schools, so it would be a percentage based on, on the amount of vehicles that we contract with. But that conversation hasn't been had with the companies.
Right. So I would say the same thing. How is it that we, as a school administration, haven't had these conversations with these vendors all along the way? It's July 19th. We've known this has been an issue all year. And just last Thursday, we start to worry about it? I just don't see how we can, like, say to ourselves that we're doing right by these folks. If they received grants and loans, that's, they should have to report that, but we got to sit down and have the dialogue. You know full well, Mr. Patrico, that I've tried for over a year to have a meeting with the city, both at the school level here. I've made motions to have Attorney Assad sit with them. I've had meetings to request with the city councilor to meet with them. The city does not want to... The city does not want to participate in any conversations. They just want to keep saying, oh, they didn't give us what they needed, so they're getting zero. I've had definitely many conversations and spent hours of time trying to advocate for them. I sent an email out that they reported to the press, which is totally fine. In that email, it articulates each member of this committee that at a meeting, a public meeting, said that they should not get zero. Guess what they got was zero. At some point, I'm relying on the people that we're paying hundreds of thousands of dollars to advocate for what's right. Why should it be the school committee? Why should it be us last minute to try to do this? This is not the right way to go about it. And it seems like, ah, we'll just transfer it, okay. Is that what we're saying? Mrs. Superintendent, is that where you, are you saying just let it be? Is that, I know you're on the spot here, it's your first meeting, I'm not trying to put you on the spot. But you know, in fairness, I did, you know, I just for clarity and for the general public and for my colleagues, I'm not spotting anybody here. Over a week ago, I had the conversation with Mrs. Ponce, I've talked to Mr. Pacheco. So don't want to get anybody to think that I'm trying to spot anybody on their first meeting. All I'm suggesting is that I asked a week ago to try to figure it out. There has been negotiations to know back and forth with vendors. Why are we not encumbering something? That's would be my, my request.
I do believe though, in all fairness to everyone, that the committee is going to be the one making that decision because you're going to be paying a bill with no services rendered. So that's a DOR rule. And it was suggested last year that communities could do that. No one has made any suggestions, it hasn't come out of DESI nor has it come out of DOR, that we can pay a bill without getting services rendered. Because they have a bill is not delivering a service to us. So this committee would have to vote to spend money without having services rendered. So it is the school committee's decision to make and not necessarily the administrations to bring it forward. I know what you're saying, the conversation is going to have to be had at the administrative level. But the ultimate decision is going to be the school committee.
And the money is gone?
When, when the recommendation comes to pay a bill, no different than any other bill.
Right, but I'm saying the money's gone after this vote. Would you agree with that? The administration's recommending, we know we have this issue. You're moving the 3.1, so you can't have it both ways.
If we overspent the budget, where would we be going to get it? If the budget was overspent for not purposes, just the buses came in high, we needed 15 more sped buses. Where would we go to this, we'd go to the city for that money. So it's never closed, the door is never closed. Maybe your control is gone, but the door is never closed. A transportation bill is a transportation bill. If it's due, it's due. I, I'm, I don't, I don't mean to make that simple, but this school department has gone to the city many times for extra transportation money. So I think that that door is.
In this case, we've got 3.1 million sitting in an account. And I'm getting administrators to come up and say, you know, we do know that there's probably some money that we owe them, but we've got 3.1 sitting there. Let's take, let's liquidate that bank account and then come back to you next month and say, I think we make, should make a recommendation, we pay them 30%, whatever. It's like the cots before the horse, like. So my question is to, Mrs. Ponce, what is your recommendation on how to rectify this situation?
Well, my recommendation is that the money has to come from the city. The payment has to come be the city. We would have to go if it's resolved and we don't have the funds, then we need to go to the city and ask for, to pay once it's resolved. Everyone's still in litigation or in negotiation as to what we're going to be paying.
I just, I don't see the logic in that.
Miss Agia, I know you have the floor, but can I just ask a very pointed question? Is the administration recommended to this committee that we encumber any of the money for the 10 days prior to school starting and those Wednesdays? Because if you're not, then this discussion is pretty much done. Because if you're not going to make that recommendation, there's nothing before us to.
I have no number that I could possibly recommend to you. I couldn't.
So unless it's incumbent.
And I'm not going to speak for.
So unless it's, unless the funds are incumbent, you're not making any other requests of the committee to spend additional funds outside of what's already been incumbent?
I think that's correct.
Okay, I'll turn it back to you, Miss Agia. I just, trying to move along.
I just got a few questions.
Yep, I just don't, I got a couple of more questions. I don't disagree with what you're saying, like it's not incumbent. My point is, is it should be encumbered. And it should be encumbered by Mr. Almeida, Mr. Pacheco, Dr. Malone, and now Mrs. Ponce. There should be a recommendation to come to this committee prior to July 19th that says, members of the school committee, we have an issue here going on that's been going on since the start of the year. We had 10 days, we told them to bill, they didn't get paid yet. We had the Wednesdays, we didn't. That should be coming from the administration that we pay hundreds of thousands of dollars to this committee prior to July 19th, which would therefore have led to us getting our number so we would know what's encumbered. That's my frustration is I'm, instead of, why it's pertinent now is because they're taking the 3.1 and going. I think it would be, you take your best guess and say, we're not, we're going to owe no more than a million dollars? Then we take the vote to say, we're going to encumber up to a million dollars, subject to your negotiations, to pay these people. I don't understand why you have.
At the end, at the end of the day, transportation's not, it's not eligible for net school spending. So the money is the city's money. But if the school committee wants to take a vote to set aside money to, to pay towards transportation, I'm fine. But you know, just to reiterate the comment by Mr. Pacheco, I will not pay a bill for service that has not been rendered. So unless I'm given the authorization from the school committee to pay a bill that the services have not been rendered, I will not pay a bill.
Yep, what's your best guess on how much it's going to?
Mr., I don't know, Miss Agia. If I had to guess, if you combine the Wednesdays and you combine, it's going to eat up almost that $3 million if you combine the 10, the 10 days and the, and the Wednesdays. Anywhere from $2 to $3 million. That's my guess. I'd have to, I'd have to go back and recalculate everything to see what we liquidated and all that, but that's my best guess.
So I make a motion that we pay 50% of the amount for Wednesdays and the first 10 days of school.
On the motion?
So, well, hold on a second, Mr. Hart. I got to get a second first. So Mr. Agia has made a motion to pay 50% of the money for the 10 days and also for the Wednesdays?
Yes.
Okay, that motion's been made, is there a second? Okay, here are no second. Do you yield, Mr. Agia?
Why nobody would second that?
Well, point of order, point of order. I want to say, I want to say something.
Hold on a second, Mr. Hart.
It's been going on for 10, 15 minutes. I get something to say and ask.
What's the point of order, Mr. Hart?
Well, my point of order is I have a question, I have a question.
Right, okay, so.
Clarifying something.
So I will just say that soon as Mr. Agia yields the floor, I will turn it over to you to ask that question.
Yeah, my, my last comment is that I think that we as an administration, school administration, all the people that I just mentioned, I think we're failing the vendors and we're not doing what is right. It's very clear to every single person at that podium up here that we, we, the school department, made a decision to say no for the first 10 days. We as a school department said no Wednesdays. And at this point, we, everybody that's here is failing those individuals because those companies are owed something to be treated fairly and to be treated right. We sat back here as a school committee and said, oh, it's okay, even though we don't have to take a vote for this, we didn't have to take a vote for Mr. Pacheco to authorize $600,000 in spending. I agree with you, it's the right thing to do. We didn't take a vote on that, but now all of a sudden to make this part right, oh, we got to take a vote now. But you don't have to come to us and say, we, we should have, you know, brought this to your attention. We as an administration have failed. Would that are you?
Thank you, Miss Agia, Mr. Hart.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Kevin, when you say services rendered, that you're not going to pay a bill for services rendered, I agree. And this, we're going back to the pandemic, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so during, so correct me if I'm wrong, but my, with my memory, the pandemic, we stopped paying the vendors, whether it was Tremblay or whoever, Wailing City, for not picking up the students, correct? We were obligated to pick, to pick them up, but they, we did not do that during the pandemic, so we're not paying them. I never once said on this committee that I would not pay the vendors at all. All I said was that I wanted a list, a report from them. I think that's what we agreed to, correct? As far as they purchased the vehicles for the special, special ed vehicles, certain other vehicles that were pretty much tailored toward our students. Is that correct? Okay, now did we, have we ever received a bill from any of those vendors? Kind of maybe guestimating what that particular.
Point of clarification?
Well, no, I'm not done. Guestimating what that particular price tag might be from the vendors. Have we ever received a report from them? Clarifying it.
No, we haven't received anything specific. The conversation was, was being had. We were also watching, Kevin and I went to meetings last year with vendors who were asking about percentages. And some districts did pay certain percentages to all of these vendors.
Some districts did pay without receiving the report. They just went 30% or 25%.
There was a negotiation, nobody paid without getting negotiations. So there was no just flat out, here you go, here's your money. They all negotiated a certain amount of, of payment. So they based it on whatever information they were given from that particular vendor. There were some districts who paid nothing, but there were some who paid.
Mr. Chairman, point of clarification.
So now, why?
Hold on a second, yeah.
Why, why is it taking us so long to, to, you know, correct this, this issue with, with the vendors?
I can't tell you that. I mean, I, it's not for the lack of, it hasn't been my only job, so, and it hasn't been Kevin's. But, but there are conversations that are being had. And the conversation has kicked up a notch in the last two to three weeks. However, that conversation's been going on for a while as to how we were going to handle this and how everyone else. We have not heard how any other district has handled at the same time. Because almost every district was in the same boat as us, if not in a completely no pay situation.
All right, well, again, I just want to clarify, my, my position anyway, was never, never, ever to not pay the vendors during the pandemic or after the pandemic when they, when, when and if we get any kind of itemized bill from them. I'm all for doing that. And I, and I agree with, you know, the, the vote or when, when the committee took that vote or the discussion that we had back during the pandemic, that they would get their, you know, they dot their i's and cross their t's for that particular report and how much that we, we would reimburse them or pay them. But as far as the services not rendered for not picking up the children, I am not willing to pay them anything or any percentage for that. But I am willing to pay them for any kind of upfront cost that they, that they spent for that, for that, for the, for the last fiscal year for tailoring those particular vehicles, for those particular students, for our students. So I just want to make that point very clear. Are you?
Thank you, Mr. Hart. With the chair being here, I think I'll, unless he objects, all right. Well, I was going to make a comment, so I was, I was going to turn it back to you. But the comment I had was that, so that we're clear, so you had FY '21, which we're in now, and you also had FY '20.
Yes.
So FY '20 is primarily where services weren't rendered?
Yes.
Correct, because of the pandemic?
Yes.
The DOR stated, stated to us or gave us guidance, I guess if you will, that if services weren't rendered, you couldn't use taxpayer money to pay contracts where the services weren't provided. That money, the balance of the money that was not encumbered or not spent, was sent back to the city when we closed out FY '20's budget. And then the city decided because it was a city expense and it was city's money, not net school spending eligible, they decided to do whatever it is that they did with it. And I, I think Miss Agia is correct, there were transfers made or recommended to the council and that balance that we sent back was transferred to other departments within city government. So that FY '20 or any discussion regarding FY '20 payment, services, that needs to be had with the city. They have that funding. FY '21 is a different story because you still have $3.1 million of quote unquote transportation money that's not encumbered. And that was why I asked the question, do you intend on making a recommendation to encumber any of those funds to include, what my colleague had mentioned, the 10 days prior to school starting and also the Wednesdays? The administration's not making that request to this committee. And so I'm not comfortable taking a vote on whether or not to expend money that's not being recommended by the very people who monitor and have discussions with vendors about what services should or shouldn't be paid for. If we don't take a vote or there is no recommendation, that 3.1, if it's not encumbered at the close of the fiscal year, July 30th, I believe, correct? Will go back to the city. And it will be the city who then determines how they plan to either negotiate, not negotiate, make whole, make partial payment, whatever the case may be to those vendors, correct? So this isn't, this isn't a situation in which if the committee here tonight doesn't take action on encumbering funds, that we're not sure what the amount is, we haven't seen what money the bus companies may have received, then it would be up to the city to continue those negotiations or talks. And I would hope that Mr. Pacheco and Mr. Almeida, both of you would participate or assist the city with that because the two of you are probably the most intimately aware of, of not only the contract, but expenses, et cetera, et cetera. So by not taking a vote to encumber additional monies here tonight, doesn't mean the committee's not interested in, in making the, the bus companies whole. It's just probably a discussion to have with the city because it's their funding and at the close of the fiscal year, the money's going to go back to them regardless, correct? Is that accurate? Not accurate, okay. So I just wanted to clarify that. One other question I just had before, either I turn it over or I move it. But the $600,000, Mr. Pacheco, was that COVID ESA I monies that we spent for cleaning of the buses? Or was that transportation funding?
Yes, it was ESA money.
So it was ESA money. So although I appreciate the need for the committee to weigh in on, on expenses, part of our reopening plan included transportation and it also included cleaning buses. And so as a result of that, by virtue of this committee voting to approve the plan for reopening that included cleaning buses, that would have been an expense and, and that was part of the recommendation in the ESA I funds that came before us, correct?
Yes.
So, so we did weigh in on whether or not there was a vote to expend the $600,000. It didn't come from transportation. So it's not an issue where the committee would have weighed in on city's money per se. It was ESA I monies that could have been used for reopening, cleaning, protective gear, Plexiglas, et cetera, et cetera, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I, I just wanted to clarify that. And although in FY '20, you know, I, I am on record saying that I don't know that we shouldn't have paid at the time vendors anything. I really, and, and I think my comments were, if we want to, you know, continue business in good faith with our vendors, that we need to look at what is their expense, what their expenses were. And if there was an opportunity to assist, that we do that. That money's now gone, it's in the city's hands. So it's up to them. I think there was a motion made that if bus companies came after the city at a later date to recoup funding, that wouldn't come out of our budget. I think Corporation Council weighed in on it. I think the committee received a letter to that effect. So FY '20, as far as I'm concerned, that book's closed financially. Any decisions regarding finances regarding FY '20 really needs to be taken up with the city CFO and Corporation Council. As far as '21, I would again advocate that we be good partners with our vendors. We are going to need them in three years when we go back to renegotiate contracts. And I think that in, in good faith, if they're going to provide us services, then we need to take a look at what have they received? And if there's additional funding that we should be working with them with, that we do that. That's just good business, that's good practice. But without a recommendation here tonight, if it is the committee's will to transfer the funds back to the city, then it would be the city's decision because it's their funding. But with that, I, I'm, I'm going to yield and if the chair wants to take over, if not, and I know you're in the middle of it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is there any other further discussion? I'm going to go with the chair and then Mr. Agia since he just got here.
I would like to say something. We received a letter today from Tremblay that was given to Corporation Council. Our concerns on this is the lack of transparency from the company. They have only sent us letters saying we want this or we're a good customer. And Attorney Rumsey is working on that today. But we did find out, and I did, I ended up talking to Kevin, so I may be late to this, that Tremblay, which had told us repeatedly they were not able to get any funds from the CARES Act or wherever they got it, got 1.5 million in March. And Amaral's got their second $600,000 check earlier this year also. So when we look at monies like that, which are substantial amounts, and I have talked to Mr. Pacheco about it, a portion of that 1.5 million dollars is covering some of Fall River's bills. What's the portion? What's the bill? Where's, where's what you spent on employees? Where's what you spent on your, on your vehicles? That's all we're asking for. And as of yet, we have not received any of those documentations. When they come to the table with tax returns, paperwork, we're going to sit down with them. But right now that they have not been forthcoming, I know they will eventually. But I think it's partly due to the fact that for the longest time, we were told they can't get money, they didn't get money. time, we were told they can't get money, they didn't get money. Well, they got money. And as I told Mr. Agia the other night, we were talking about it, no one in the company who's had a stronger advocate for them than Mr. Agia even bothered to call and tell him they got money. So that would have made his argument more, well, what percent of that was from Fall River or what percent of that was from New Bedford? But we didn't have any information on that until we pulled it out of the federal database one night. So I know our attorney is diligently working with the people from Tremblay's. We did get another letter today and I would be very cautious on getting into this because we are heading for litigation maybe with these companies, but when we get there, everything will be on the table. I yield, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Agia?
Just a couple of points now. One, Mr. Mayor, could you tell me when Attorney Rumsey reached out to Tremblay Bus to ask for any of the information that you just indicated?
I don't have that date, sorry.
Could you get me that tomorrow?
Yeah, I'll try to get it.
Thank you. Mr. Pacheco, were you ever given anything by Tremblay Bus that explained any of the documents that Mr. Mayor was talking about?
Nothing about the grant money, absolutely not.
Not that. I'm talking about how much they were looking for, any of that correspondence.
The conversation.
Yep.
But as far as in writing, as far, there was an email that said that there would be, it was limited, yes. But it was limited. It didn't get spelled out. I know the documents that other districts received.
Yep.
And it was very, very, it was confidential.
Yep.
The documents had some, for lack of a better term, some trade secret that they didn't want out there because of the way they figure their vehicle purchases and everything else, but there were documents, we never received that. What we received was a very straightforward document that had costs and it didn't have anything about employees on it.
When you received those documents?
Quite a, quite some time ago.
You forwarded those to Attorney Rumsey?
It was also sent to them, I think, if I'm not mistaken. It may have been sent to them, I'm sorry.
What I'm saying, if you get that information from them, you would forward it to them?
I would send it to them now, yes.
So, Mr. Mayor, we were just talking about the money that's in the current budget. We weren't really talking about last year because that's a separate issue. That's what my point of clarification was trying to be, that the answer that they gave was, yeah, it was COVID. That's not what we're talking about here. We're talking about the current year, the first nine days of school and the Wednesdays. In the letter, it clearly indicates today to the committee that all the vendors were told to bill the district. Once they've done that, they're looking for some sort of number. They're trying to work with us and I don't think that we were fair. That's what I said before the mayor came in. I'll say it again. They're trying to be good partners here, but we're not, they're not getting the help that we need. So we brought the issue forward. We should be sitting at the table, Alan Rumsey, with our attorney, whoever, like, let's sit down and tell them, we need X, Y, and Z. We need to know this information. We haven't gotten that to this point. What I'm asking is if we can please look at it because I don't think anybody is thinking we don't have a number that we need to put forward. At the end of their email, they talk about having funds that expenses relative to special education transportation, the stuff like that, that actually indicates what Mr. Hart was talking about. If there is those type of things, we should pay him something. And all I'm saying is we're, by doing this 3.1 to the city, we're taking our authority, which I said from here, we should be at least working with them a little more. And, you know, I'm not going to vote for it, so I'd ask that just when we do bring it up, to take this one separate, so then the rest of the transfers.
Certainly. Charlie, Mr. Chairman?
I do want to make it clear, what Mr. Agia was talking about are emails written by the company. There's no backup documentation from a payroll service, a tax return. It's simply an email that the company typed out and said, we would like this. And that's fine as a starting point, but when they get to the table, we want the documentation for, did they lose money? How much did they lose? Who did they pay? Did their drivers collect unemployment compensation more than they would have made while they were working? Those are the things we're talking about, Mr. Agia, not an email typed from the company, we did this, we're a good customer. All those things are true and I support that, but when we ask for documentation for a potential legal case, you want much more than that. You want, like I said, their payroll information, their tax returns. So let's see where this goes. And as I said to you before, Attorney Rumsey got the email this afternoon about 4:00 and I know he's working on it.
And I would just like to reiterate that you said you're going to get me tomorrow from Attorney Rumsey when he asks for certain documents. That's all I'm asking, is to make sure that he's reached out. I personally don't think he has, but if he has, please let us know what they're looking for so we're all on the same page here. We all think they should get paid, but I'd like to get an answer on that up or down. Thank you, I yield.
Thank you. On the motion, there was a motion made to approve the fourth quarter revolving fund report. Mr. Agia, I believe the spirit of his comment was to amend that motion to take separate the transportation. Is that correct, Mr. Agia?
You can just run it. I'll just vote no on the whole thing. It's going to pass anyway, that's fine. Make it easier, one vote instead of two.
So no amendment to the motion?
No.
So the main motion, vote to approve the fourth quarter revolving funds. Madam Secretary, was there a motion?
I believe it was the fourth quarter budget, the transfer.
Can you tell me who it was made by and seconded? I lost track during the conversation.
Mr. Hart made the motion and Mr. Hetzler seconded.
Okay, so the motion was made by Mr. Hart, seconded by Mr. Hetzler. Hearing no further discussion on a motion, roll call.
Mr. Agia?
No.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzler?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
11.5 is the discussion, a vote to approve the year-to-date FY '21 budget report is presented by Mr. Almeida, CFO.
Motion approved.
Motion made by Mr. Hart. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hetzler. Any discussion on 11.5? Mr. Agia?
The school lunch program?
Just one second. Did we skip the revolving funds, Mr. Costa?
I'm sorry?
Did we skip the revolving funds?
Did I miss revolving?
It was four, right? I'm sorry, Mr. Agia.
Oh, right. We didn't get, we didn't go through.
We'll come back. We'll get revolving. The vote that was taken was on the transfers. I'll come back for revolving. Thank you for that. Thank you.
Can we clarify what, my question is on the revolving account, which was the next item on the agenda. 11.4? Is that not what we're doing?
Right. So we are on the revolving fund now. The vote that was taken was on, and I stand in error, I said 11.4, it's actually was 11.3, which was the vote for the transfers.
That was the vote.
That was made by Mr. Hart, seconded by Mr. Hetzler, correct, Madam Secretary?
Correct.
Okay. So we're on the revolving account now.
One question.
Correct. Go ahead.
The school lunch account. Has there been any monies paid out of that account for the Derfie project?
The only amounts that we paid were the monies that we brought forward to you. I believe it was back in January or February and it was in relation to the kitchen equipment that was purchased and it was for about $240,000.
At one time, that's it?
$240,000 or so.
So this amount that's here is real money that's?
Yes.
That's left over?
Yes.
With that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Agia. Any further discussion on the revolving accounts, 11.4? Hearing none. There was a motion by Mr. Hart to accept, seconded by Mr. Hetzler. Roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzler?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yep.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
We will now move on to 11.5, which is the discussion and vote to approve the year-to-date FY '21 budget report is presented by Mr. Almeida.
Motion approved.
Is there a motion made by Mr. Hart? Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Larve. Any discussion? Mr. Agia?
The question I had was on the, we just talked about the transportation, but the McKinney-Vento and all that, it just happens to be 270? Is that just what was, came in? This is an exact figure, 270,000?
That's how much we spent out of the McKinney-Vento account this year.
Say it again, I can't.
That is how much we spent out of the McKinney-Vento transportation account.
And how much is left in that account?
I'd have to go back to it.
Yeah, if you can get it offline.
I'll get it for you.
It just seems odd that it was exactly, all the other ones have, if we're paying bills, they, you know, not an even number.
Yep.
It's a little odd there. And I can't get the second one, but the health insurance for the year, how did we end up for that? And does the city owe us any money on that?
So the balance is about 1.1 million dollars. I'll be working on the end-of-year report in September. At that time, depending on how all the other balances flush out, I will report back to you, probably at the October meeting, as to where we stand.
You're thinking it's around a million dollars or more?
At a minimum, yes.
With that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Agia. Any further discussion, roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzler?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
Item number 12 is for your information, it's retirements, resignations, appointments, and unfortunate death notices. Is there a motion to accept and place on file? Made by Ms. Larve, seconded by Mr. Hart?
I'm second. Mr. Hart? Yeah, we're going, we're approving 12.1, 12.2, 12.3, and 12.4 in a bundle.
Yeah, for your information, retirements, resignations, appointments, and death notices.
I'm going to make a comment on the death notices.
Sure, absolutely. For yours.
And, you know, I, obviously, we lost former mayor Bob Correa and I knew him very, very well and he was a, he was a good man and at times a mentor to me, my mentor. And I know that the community's going to miss him very, very much, but I also am going to miss him very, very much. He was a class act, always a smile on his face when I saw him and talked to him. And I just want to send my, you know, condolences out to the Correa family and to also to Mrs. Correa and just Godspeed, Mayor Correa. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. At this point, just like the committee, if you'd indulge, for a, just a brief moment of silence, not only for former mayor Robert Correa, but also for Ms. Gonzalez and Mrs. Hadad, who appear on the agenda this evening. Thank you and thank you for those comments, Mr. Hart. Was there a motion made by Mr. Hart, I'm sorry, made by Ms. Larve, seconded by Mr. Hart? Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzler?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yeah.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
Item number 13, new business, any new business to be discussed or brought forward that was not otherwise known 48 hours prior to this evening's meeting? Hearing none. Item number 14 is a request for the executive session. I'm going to ask Attorney Assad for the committee to read the reasons for executive session, then I'll ask for a motion, a second, and a vote. Attorney Assad?
National law chapter 38, section 21A7, to review and approve executive session committee minutes for the June 14, 2021 regular meeting of the Forward School Committee. National law chapter 38, section 21A7, to review and approve the executive session committee minutes for the June 21, 2021 special meeting of the Forward School Committee. Also, national law chapter 38, section 21A1, to review the open meeting law complaint filed on June 15, 2021 by Colin Dias regarding the June 14, 2021 regular meeting of the Forward School Committee. Mr. Dias alleges that on the item, one of the items for executive session was inaccurately stated as to conduct strategy in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel or to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, including superintendent of schools Matthew H. Malone. National law chapter 38, section 21A1, to review the open meeting law complaint filed on July 6, 2021 by Colin Dias alleging that on June 11, 2021, he made a request of the Forward School Committee for executive session minutes pursuant to the open meeting law 22G2. He alleges that the school committee's response on June 25, 2021 was in violation of the open meeting law. National law chapter 38, section 21A1, to review the open meeting law complaint filed on July 8, 2021 by Colin Dias regarding the June 24, 2021 special meeting of the Forward School Committee. Mr. Dias alleges that he was threatened. National law chapter 38, section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all cafeteria employees of the Forward School System represented by the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees. Counsel 93, Local 1118, as the chair has determined that an open meeting may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National law chapter 38, section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all maintenance employees of the Forward School System represented by the American Federation of State and County, State, County, and Municipal Employees. Counsel 93, Local 1118, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National law chapter 38, section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all custodial employees of the Forward School System represented by the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees. Counsel 93, Local 1118, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National law chapter 38, section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all safety, security employees of the Forward School System represented by the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees. Counsel 93, Local 1118, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National law chapter 38, section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all civil service, civil clerical employees of the Forward School System represented by the Forward Department of Civil Service Clerical Employees Association, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National law chapter 38, section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all paraprofessional employees of the Forward School System represented by the Forward Federation of Paraprofessionals, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National law chapter 38, section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all government program employees, including without limitation paraprofessionals, parent workers, clerics of the Forward School System that are paid from federal, state grants and represented by the Forward Public Schools Government Programs, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National law chapter 38, section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all administrators and employees represented by the Forward Administrators Association, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National laws, chapter 38, section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all professional teaching employees of the Forward School System, including coaches, title-one teachers, nurses, occupational and physical therapists, specialists in the teaching profession, represented by the Forward Educators Association, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. National law chapter 38, section 21A1, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation with regard to Massachusetts Commission against Discrimination Complaints, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the litigating position of the committee. National law chapter 38, section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel and/or to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, including Maria Pons, interim superintendent of schools/assistant superintendent of schools, chief academic officer, Kevin Almeida, chief financial officer, Kenneth Pacheco, chief operation officer, Scott Cabral, chief information officer, Alex Mello, webmaster technician, camera person, even Masood, sports producer and editor, Gary Leit, media editor and media instructor, Grace Costa, administrative assistant, Maria Borges, custodial supervisor, Shannon Dunbar, early childhood playground facilitator, Veronica Amorin, computer technician, Margaret Sullivan, instructional support liaison, Erin Drowski, instructional support liaison, Isaac Moniz, instructional support liaison, Julie Sunnison, instructional support liaison, Emma Santoro, ISL early college advisor, Kevin Galloway, facilities manager. We will reconvene. There may or may not be statements at that time.
Having heard, the reasons for executive session, is there a motion?
Motion to.
Made by Mr. Hart. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Larrabee. Madam Secretary, roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzler?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yep.
Ms. Larrabee?
Oh, yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
Committee will stand at recess for executive session. Good evening. I'd like to call back to order the regular meeting of the Forward School Committee for Monday, July 19, 2021. Madam Secretary, would you please call a roll?
Mr. Agia?
Here.
Mr. Costa?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here.
Mr. Hetzler?
Here.
Mr. Corey?
Here.
Ms. Larrabee?
Here.
Mayor Coogan?
Here.
As a result of executive session, are there any motions before the committee this evening?
Motion to approve the executive session minutes from June 14, 2021, seconded.
Motion made by Mr. Hetzler, seconded by Mr. Hart. Roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzler?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yep.
Motion to approve the executive session minutes from June 24, 2021, seconded.
Made by Mr. Hetzler, the motion was seconded by Mr. Hart. Roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzler?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yeah.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yep.
Motion to approve the MOA as negotiated between all civil clerical employees of the Forward School System and the Forward Public Schools. Seconded.
The motion was made by Mr. Hetzler, it was seconded by Mr. Hart. Roll call.
Mr. Agia?[1498.23]